That is parked in the driveway right now because of the, you know, failed unit that's on the inside. And they are seeking to be replaced in a permanent position at the rear side of the building.
Where will go inside?
So the, basically, they're gonna have all their transfer switches or, you know, all the equipment that the generator hooks up to. So that they can basically go from, you know, commercial power to, you know, standby generator. So the, the unit, the intent is only to run during commercial power outages. If that's taking place, there's usually a storm of some sort. You know, it's not gonna be running any other time other than an outage. And I think they do monthly testing. It runs for, I believe, ten minutes on typically like Thursday morning, ten o'clock. They're, they can do any, any, you know, time that, you know, is conducive for, you know, for the neighborhood. So really, it's, you know, it is providing backup power for, you know, their phone services, the internet. And of course, you know, nine one one travels through the, you know, through that building. So kind of an important, you know, line to keep open, you know, during outages. The unit, it is a fairly quiet unit. It's, I believe, sixty, sixty-eight decibels, which I think allows dishwasher, you know, makes about that same noise. So they have looked at, you know, adding the sound attenuation to the unit to make sure that it is as quiet as possible. One of the quieter ones that they could find, you know, for their application. So basically, we're just, we're here tonight to see if we can work something out. You know, the CCI is open to, you know, any feedback that helps make this more, you know, attractive to the area. You know, so really, we're just looking for, I guess, any suggestions and any questions you might have on the, on the topic.
Okay. Okay, this drawing doesn't show the setbacks on it.
Uh, they're, okay, that one doesn't, but they are within, the setbacks are being approached.
No matter where you put these?
No matter where you put it, correct.
And how, how much are they, look at the setbacks?
Um, I believe, let's see.
Yeah, ten foot setback there?
Uh, no, I think it's a twenty footer.
Oh, it's twenty footer. So the back of the building is twenty feet on the closest.
Yeah, so actually, you are correct. The, I think the, you know, the building was built to that setback. I believe that was an addition at some point. So I think the, the whole unit would be in there. Prior to this, they did have an underground storage or diesel tank that was there that was removed on the backside. And they would be looking, you know, that's the area that would be looking to install the other generator.
And is the driveway driveway on their property or is that a driveway somebody else's?
Um, I believe it is their driveway. It was paved a couple of years ago. CCI paid for it. So I believe that one is theirs. It might be a shared.
Right. Telephone company has another driveway.
Okay.
So this is the driveway. Oh, am I ninety degrees out on this?
So it's a driveway, if we're looking at it in draft, this is the driveway?
Uh, yes, so we would be.
The back door.
Yeah, the one door and the driveway comes in.
So based on his picture, this is the driveway and this is the backside will be over here.
Oh, okay, so that's, that's on the inside of their building. That's on this side. Which way is the driveway?
So the driveway is here.
This is the driveway.
So this is, this is prospect here.
Space is prospects?
Yeah, so the driveway is right here and that generator that's there now is sitting right here. And what they're looking to do is to put it on the backside of the building, you know, somewhere. They had it. A and B.
That is sitting there. This temporary one.
The temporary one is like, it moves around, but with this picture, it's about right here. With the picture you have, it's, it's set up back here.
Yeah, she's by, it's by the door on that one. That's, that's how it was yesterday.
Right.
Yep.
It's just straight down the driveway.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, no, it's actually, or it's, it's in here someplace. So how many feet, and that's the property line?
Uh, that's the property line, yes.
So what is, so you had a twenty foot setback and now you're gonna have effectively, what, ten?
Approximately, yes.
Ten at this point, eleven at this point, nine and some kind of.
No, that's bigger.
And then ten at this point. Cause the property line goes like this.
So the, the generator is actually the smaller blocks. That's just denoting the pad. The pad does not.
But it's not two generators, it's one?
It is.
Yeah, this is alternate locations.
Yeah, any location.
Yeah, where you can go see anywhere, anywhere within, you know, those, those lines.
So let, let me ask you, Dick, as an, as the butter on that stuff.
Well, yeah, I'm the guy who's got a liver, but yeah, more so than Lisa. I texted her and asked her what she thought.
She thought she had no problem cause she came in.
Yeah, I just told, I just texted, heck of fourth or.
So, I mean, your house is.
I remember where your hand is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So farther away from your house is better?
Oh, yeah, of course. I mean, I don't, I don't really do, it's gonna go off for ten minutes once a week.
Once a month.
Once a month.
Yeah.
And seems like they go off, there's one in the fire station, a couple of blocks from my office. It seems like it runs for more than ten minutes, but that may just.
Depends on the size of their mine at my house, which we leave for fifteen minutes on Mondays at noon.
Yeah, the one, it, well, one, the one that crossed my office is the back of all of the municipal buildings in Winchester. So, it's probably bigger than that unit, I'm sure it is. It's as big as a small moving vehicle, really.
So they're also, you know, if they, they can put a fence up, or they were proposing to put a screen fence around it, shadow box, alternating, you know, fence.
What, what do you mean by a shadow box fence?
So basically.
One board on this side, one board on this side?
Correct, and they kind of alternate so it gives a little bit of sound and, you know, visual screen as well.
But just around the, well, then you, just around the unit and the pad.
Uh, I think they were actually looking to tie it into the building if possible, or against the building to kind of fence the whole.
That might be nice.
Yeah.
I don't think I have an objection to it if they're gonna, if they're agreeable to fencing it in. I, you know, you need, you know, it's reasonable. I don't think it's gonna significantly impact the value of my property.
But wouldn't Plan B be a little bit better too, just cause it keeps it a little bit.
Oh, no, I think so, location wise, yeah.
Okay.
And the other thing with the fence is critical infrastructure here. Keeping kids out of there, vandals.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
So fence has a couple of good benefits.
Exactly.
Yeah, noise cancellation.
It's gonna be a motivated vandal. Say it'd be like twelve, you know, cause it's uphill both ways.
Yes.
I'll laugh when I know exactly which side.
Yeah, yeah.
So let's see, the pad is, the pad is. Okay, let's just assume that this is the, the setback. So this is going half, halfway into the setback. At least halfway back.
You're burning up back in the setback.
Yeah, I think you're mostly within the setback.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Residential, right?
Village District.
That makes all the difference on the amount of setbacks, fifteen feet.
Yeah, maybe smaller setbacks.
So the sides are fifteen. The sides and rear are fifteen feet, the front is twenty feet. So the sides and rear where it's basically has to be fifteen feet, so that's why it would have to be.
So I mean, if, if, if Plan B was adopted, I mean, we're nine foot three inches, so we're.
Little smaller pad.
Five or six feet off of setback.
Why, why is the pad so much bigger than the unit?
Uh, they just like to keep that so they can maintain service around the unit. It's easier for them to.
They have to deal with weeds.
Clear the snow and then the other weeds that grow, yes.
So does, everything in here run on batteries?
So they have, um, so if commercial power goes out, they, they can rely on their battery backup, okay? I'm not sure for the CO what the duration is, but it's probably in the realm of maybe five to eight hours. That it could run on battery. But before the battery, you know, that's kind of like their last.
Yeah, one puncher on battery, you're looking to get the generator going.
Correct, so that basically just makes sure that, you know, that they have some time. Commercial power does go out, make sure that the generator does kick on and it gives them a little bit of breathing room, you know, if something does malfunction. Or in the case where they are now, they have to manually come in to, you know, to fire the generator. As this setup would be here, it'd be an automatic transfer. So no person would technically need to go in.
Yeah, they'd probably go in anyway.
And that would, but that would reduce the, you know, the time that they have to rely on the batteries, you know, that are there.
Okay. What are you thinking there?
I've got no grievances from any of others. Correct, you're.
He's the director of others.
Yeah.
You're not, you're not gonna sell your house after this or something?
They just bought it.
Really?
Yeah, that one.
So this picture is basically where you could be going.
Uh, that's correct.
I know I'm bad with like distances, but it does not have to seem like twenty feet. Which I see why it hits awful with it.
But it also doesn't, doesn't mean that the trees aren't a property line either.
No, but that one shows us.
There's a stone wall, it's the property line.
But we're literally talking about five feet and inches.
Yeah.
So.
It's gonna be right up there.
But I'll say five feet and inches from the inside, so it's.
I, I don't see this terrible.
It benefits everybody. It benefits everybody.
What's perfect never is deed in, but.
I mean, what if the power goes out and I need something on Amazon? I mean, what's that? What if the power goes out and I need something on Amazon, you know?
Yeah, it's pretty cruel.
Or say the Patriots were winning a game and you were in the middle of watching it.
Yeah.
So, you know, some of the scenarios improbable.
Oh, just to get the children sticking out.
Do we want to read the five criteria out or do we want to individually read them?
Let's, let's go through them. You still in the hearing?
I don't wanna close the hearing, no.
This would be deliberation if we're gonna go through them.
Yeah, I mean, is there any more?
Any, anything more you wanna say in the hearing part?
I think, uh, we're all set.
Okay, Dick, any more comments for the hearing?
No, you ought to pass it.
Okay, um, make a motion.
Make a motion to oppose the public hearing?
Yeah, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so now we're gonna deliberate. We have the application now. You wanna do the, do the reading, Justin?
Okay, section one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because. The granting of a variance would actually benefit the public because phone and internet services are both residential and business in the town. Would have less unundrafted service in the event of commercial power loss. Section two, if the variance were granted, spirit of the ordinance would be observed because. CCI understands and supports the reasons for the ordinance and they have like several different options to make this product work without the need of a variance. Section three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because in this case, the proposed work actually benefits the general public and creates no harm. Section four, variance were granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. Because the proposed generator located on south elevation is in the area of the property that is not easily visible to the general public. Existing tree screening area and CCI has incorporated to design a perimeter fence that will close the generator and provide further screening. Landscaping can be incorporated into the exterior side of the fence to enhance the existing wooded area. And add an additional layer of screening if desired by the town. Section five, unnecessary hardship. Owing to the special conditions of the property, the distinction from the other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes or ordinance provision and the specific application. Of that provision to the property because not granting the variance would result in a hardship for CCI as they would not be able to provide. The expected level of phone, internet emergency, nine one one services to the town. And section two here, proposed use is a reasonable one because the phone building has been at its current location for a number of years. As internet services and equipment have evolved, additional space and infrastructure is needed to support the new technologies. CCI has added a wooden fence screen and potential landscaping as needed to make sure the product is not a nicer than the public. Section B, explain now if the criteria in sub paragraph A are not established and unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist. And only if owing to special conditions of the property, the distinction of the property in the area. The property cannot be reasonably used in strict performance with the ordinance and variance. If therefore necessary, or is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. CCI has not, if CCI is not granting the variance, in addition to decrease. Levels of reliability of phone and internet service to the public, CCI may be subject to monetary fines and/or penalties by the Public Utilities Commission. Small area of land, the only area in section can be utilized is in question.
Four letters.
Right.
And all the letters are noted, right?
Yes. Actually, one of them looks like the state.
The state, yeah.
Well, after you come running in here, don't do it. I don't know.
That's, that's actually the real trail that this is.
I know.
So do we, do we have an A or B on this, on the hardship?
I mean, both of them have a.
I mean, the problem is it's not any different from any other property in the village district because they're all tiny and can't meet the setbacks.
They, there's no, barely a building in the village district that can, would conform to the village district zone.
And this one did, just barely.
It was small enough. I don't see the people even gonna notice. I don't think people are even gonna notice this.
No, I don't think so.
So if it's approved, I just wanted, I wanna know about the, the fence. How tall are you planning on making the fence?
Uh, we're planning to go with a eight foot fence.
Okay, so you'll.
Eight foot.
So you'll still need, you'll have to come back to selectmen for a building permit on that?
Correct, yes.
Which you just incorporate into this once ever it gets approved, you just incorporate it all in one.
Okay.
What's, what's the setback for a fence when you can't put it on the.
One foot.
I thought it was two feet.
One foot.
One foot.
One foot on property.
You just need to be able to walk alongside it without your property.
Yeah, one foot will offer defense.
One skinny person.
Okay, I was gonna say, I don't fit, I'm, I'm fairly skinny, but I don't fit in the foot anymore.
Silence.
And that doesn't, and that doesn't get involved with the setback at all?
No. Well, it adds its own setback.
It's a one foot. Okay, so we're, we're not coming back around to worry about a fence?
No, that one, as long as they, if they're doing like right around the concrete pad, like a foot off the concrete pads, pad would do it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So it's not like the, these sides are the setback issue.
Right, it's that, yeah. And where, where's your house in relation to this? Is it setback?
If, 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 if we're looking, if the tabletop is a map and where they have their, their plot of the building. My, and, and let's say the edge of the table is the property line. My yard is where TJ is and my house is where you are. That, that particular lot is an acre and three quarters or something like that.
So are you setback more from prospect than the, this building is?
Oh, God, yes.
Okay. So it's not like, it's not like the generator's gonna.
No, my house is actually behind the Chafys.
Oh, way up there.
Well, it's all in one lot, but, well, I'm.
But I mean, as far as, if you look at it.
If you, if you were on high, if you're on the high street side, you have Lisa Stedman, the driveway for these guys. Then you have Hazeltons, then you have the, the beginning of the Chafys property and then the Chafys property. So you've got a long haul up there. And so I, I, I own, I'm moving from one house on Russell Avenue to the other. And the one that I've noticed on is the one that's closer, but it's still more like in the Chafys front yard. And my other house is like the Chafys backyard.
Okay. So just speaking fence, you don't necessarily want the fence next to this, you want it sort of.
Well, no, I think they should, I think they should do what, what, I think they should put their fence around the unit and make it safe.
Around a unit.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be, I think if you expand the fence, i- if you try and take it along the stone wall. Which is what the, the boundary is there, I think, I think you create a problem unnecessarily. I think they've got their, you correctly, you don't agree, but, you know, they've got a halfway decent plan. I think, I think the B site's the better one. Uh, but close the thing in and nobody's ever gonna even know it's there. Cause there's a lot of trees around it as well. That's, that's my thoughts on it.
So there, there is basically a public safety part of this too.
For fences.
Well, the whole thing, the whole.
The whole thing, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, cause if they don't have the generator, then they have to, they have to wheel this sucker in every single time. To, if they lose power or other things.
We're just leaving park there.
Well, if you've got, God forbid, a hurricane or some terrible event, you know, you're got, you've got five hours you sit on the batteries, five to eight hours.
Yeah.
And that, I assume that's there on the theory that you can get somebody down there, turn this thing on. And what you're trying to avoid is that potential need to get someone there when everything else is imploding.
Correct.
I think, I think procedures are gonna be, if the generator's running, somebody's gonna be on their way there.
Yes, that's typically what happens, yeah.
I, I used to do this kind of stuff.
Okay.
At, at phone companies.
Okay.
And so.
Yeah, but they don't, it's not as urgent if the generator's running, right?
Well, you, I'm trying to remember how long the office used to go for. If you got up to three or four hours and you were starting to panic on batteries, cause the voltage was starting to draw.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you can actually, then the old, the old mechanical switches, you could hear them slowing down.
Yeah.
That moved them to quite this fast, huh? But everything, this is probably a electronic office anyway.
And that eyesore of a generator would be gone, you know, that temporary, you know, that's there now, but it's not very pleasing.
Yeah.
Why do they keep moving it around?
I don't think that, well, I think it's been there for.
Oh, I thought they moved it around on the site.
No, I mean, they may have shifted it, uh, maybe for parking or, or something, but I think for the, for the most part, it's been on that side.
We just need to figure out what to write upon the decision, if we're gonna make a decision.
Do we need to go to deliberations or anything, or do we?
No, we are deliberating.
Yeah, I mean, we're not, we're.
Get off work.
Make a motion.
I move to approve the variance request. What was that?
It's a debate.
Oh, he's, you seconded it? Okay. Any further discussion?
Now we have.
We're, we're stipulating Plan B with the proposed fencing.
Right, which, it's not like you were, you wanted, wanted to do anyway.
Oh, whichever. That's why we left our.
I like the idea of that offset fencing, cause that's gonna cancel out, it's called a cancellation of noise.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. You're good to go.
Thank you, guys, and thank you very much. Okay, so we'll, so is there, what's the process after tonight?
We have to write up a decision, yeah.
Write up a decision and then you, uh, basically, once you get that decision, you'll come back to the slide board. With the addition of the, uh, for the building permit and then fill out all that information and get, or add the fence line, uh, the fence in there.
Yeah, okay.
In the variance, yeah.
In the variance and then.
Okay, is there a wait period? I know some towns have an appeal period.
Well, we'll go ahead and issue the building permit, but our next meeting's on the south.
Okay.
And then, you know, some, there's, I guess there's a thirty day appeal, some of you go to Superior Court.
Yeah.
But it would, it would have to be in a buffer.
Yeah.
And we've heard from two, I'm gonna say we heard from basically three of the four because even states aren't gonna follow it.
Right.
The only one we haven't heard from was.
The Hazelton.
Yes.
Okay.
When was the, the missing one?
You could wait thirty days from today to.
Yeah.
Start, you know, you could probably screw around with purchase, I don't know, it's that long.
That's nothing.
I don't know, it's the rest. They're basically on the backside of it. They're the other side of it.
Oh, okay.
So I mean, it's, it's one of those things where it's like, we heard from three out of the four, basically.
Yeah, that's.
Two out of the three, so I don't know.
Yeah, the only person, if, if it was impacting somebody, it would actually be impacting me.
Correct.
That's, that's what Lisa said, because it's on my side.
Okay. How would somebody like to write up the decision?
Question B, guys?
No, I usually write them up on the, trying to share the wealth here.
I'm not here to do it.
I'm not, it's a problem. It'd be like approved.
That's the second one.
More.
Like basically, all you gotta say on this one, it's approved per all, per all five criteria and that's it.
We're decided to meet the criteria and we approved it with the following stipulations, it'd be in proposed site B and then have an eight foot fence installed around it. What do you call it, a board on?
Uh, shadow box.
That's a shadow box fence.
Okay, I'm gonna write that down on the.
It's reported.
Yeah.
And that'll, that'll be ready about ten minutes after this meeting.
Oh, Emi's gonna put that in the minutes too.
Yes.
So. Can you email it to him? That's awesome.
So awesome Abby is effectively writing it, 'cause when she writes the minutes, you can read the minutes, you can cut and paste Abby's minutes and. You're done.
Or you could just cut and paste it, send it to me for my signature.
That's true. Look at what you've done.
Uh, Abby's secret palace. Do you have anything else on your docket?
No.
Well, just regular, regular beating stuff, you know? Alright, Paul has attended. Well, thank you for coming, Dick, we appreciate that.
No problem.
Did you watch that?
Big sport.
No problem.
Do you wanna keep these photos or do you stay with your file?
The photos, yes, I don't think we really want that stuff.
Okay.
But the photos, yeah, we'll put that.
I gotta, I gotta clean this up.
Yeah, we'll propose this and then that will be the file itself, 'cause everything gets put in a nice pre-file now.
Okay, great, so we'll just stand by and wait for the final notice and, uh.
Yeah.
We'll file.
Should be within a couple days.
Okay. Alright, and we'll get the building permit. Alright, thank you all.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Alright, hearing on. Okay, approving previous minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Sorry. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead, okay. Any correspondence? No, no more public content. Any old business? We already did old, we already did new business.
How did the, um, budget go? Budget being part of it go? I already know a selection part line, how did the budget go?
Sorry, go ahead.
Same as, same as the, the selectmen's side. It's like, okay, that's good. Smallest budget in town, the ZVA.
We just reduce our annual producer budget.
By a little, yeah.
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 Yeah, they were happy with that.
Yeah, we can knock the tax rate down.
I mean, you would think you'd be happy about knocking down the big ones, but the little ones are like, yeah!
Small victories.
I did, I, I did like the fact, it was interesting that the planning board has an advisor.
Yes, I do.
At meetings, like, we could use that.
If you find one who knows a bunch about it, that's the one thing, they found someone who knows a lot about planning boards.
Yeah.
Are we still? Yeah. Yeah, where? I'm looking at my phone, it's right there.
Okay, um. You wanna do a selectmen's update?
Um, not really much on our plates right now, a couple of building permits approved, approved. Biggest thing is you've got a voting coming up in.
Now we're two weeks.
Not exactly sure of the time, but it's all set up from the other office there.
Is it eight or something?
I don't know, I haven't heard, that's my problem.
So what day are we due to do it?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. And we don't do really voting, so.
Nope. We're in the middle of budget season, so of course we're hearing budgets here for last week, including this one. Going over our IT services, timber, taxes and those such things. So, not much. Busy night, but, oh, we also got our county tax bill.
Oof.
Who does the town newsletter?
Which part?
Who actually writes it?
Which part?
Can somebody put a blurb in there on the rules about fireworks in town, our ordinance? Wouldn't it be a good thing to notify people as to our ordinance?
Um, even the noise ordinance?
Yeah, for fireworks, it's the same.
Yeah, that's basically, there's a noise ordinance, I can play that in, but.
I thought fireworks, there was a cutoff at Penn State, but there was a specific ordinance regarding fireworks.
That's all, is.
No, there's, isn't there one specifically for fireworks?
Yeah.
I believe there is.
Didn't you guys just do that back in the day?
Fireworks ordinance?
It would just be really nice to notify people as to if there was one in what time.
Just, just a reminder?
I think there's just a noise ordinance.
Sorry, there's no fireworks.
No, I think I released into the zoning ordinance. But there was, there was something with, not after a certain time and not close, closer than a hundred yards to a house, a kind of thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
Was that a district selectmen's thing?
I honestly never seen that before.
Could be a state thing.
Well, I'm pretty sure on the website.
More vehicles, so the.
Fireworks ordinance, the sale position, yah, 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 yah. Fireworks may not be discharged after ten PM and may not be discharged within a hundred and fifty feet of residence. Violators are subject to a hundred dollar fine per occurrence. Does that mean per pop?
Base point.
Uh, the ordinance passed and adopted April first, twenty twenty one.
I was joking, I was kidding, sorry. I knew you weren't losing it.
I had a riff on for that.
It's not, it might be something nice to notify people, 'cause, you know, a lot of people with PTSD or whatever, dogs, animals.
I've been hearing them go off before ten o'clock, so.
I mean, I live right here and I've had quite a few instances where ten thirty people are hopping off fireworks and. Could be gunshots too, though, I'm not sure.
That's the hard part.
There's, there's the ordinance on that.
It's one of those, one of the favorite games in other states is, uh, you know, firework or gunshot.
Yep.
But yeah, it, it goes along the same as our noise ordinance, you know, it's, uh, ten PM and all that, so.
I mean, there, we end up in a lot of, if you look at the, uh, Facebook community page, there's a lot of commentary on it about people doing it, so it might be a good thing to put in there. You know, it's not gonna know what we do, but just, uh.
I can run it into the selectmen update, pardon.
Yeah, you probably should schedule like an annual update or do it before, how big holidays where you know.
Yeah, maybe in the spring before, like, yeah. Especially if they went crazy. Definitely before the Fourth of July, maybe.
I know, this, just recently, there's been a lot going, I saw Facebook post that a lot, there was like, it's been going on for a week straight, it's like, barely heard it once, and then they made that complaint, I was like.
Oh, where, where are we living? Right here on School Street, it's a lot of fireworks for a full week.
And there's, and, and there's probably almost no place you could do it legally in that area, 'cause the lots are so small.
Right over here, there, there'd be a ton of them. Yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily care about buildings next to the house, whoever owns somebody's house down there, it's gonna be on them, but the timeframe is more, that's fair enough.
On, uh, Barrett Street, they were setting off, just a fun little story, they were setting them off, um, on the hour, every hour from the time the, the summer ordinance was, it, like, it was legal to the time right before ten o'clock. And it was just one firework every single hour on the hour.
So I'm, I really wanna know.
Is it, that's an exploding alarm clock.
So once, once, I get the bells working, then they're gonna chime every hour on the hour anyways. So at midnight, it's gonna be twelve tons.
Oh, what for that?
That's sort of.
Oh, yeah.
It's loud.
Yeah, I kinda missed them.
I'm working on it, it's a, it's a hard project to get up there, freshman, it's very hard. It's not the last part, it's trying to figure out how it works.
I went up the ladder, my problem was, how do I get down the ladder?
Very careful.
I know better than to go up the ladder, because I know I have a problem going down it.
With the one ladder, there's a lot of wasps up in there.
Oh, I bet.
So I'm like, and there's a little window that you could see straight out, and it's like, they're all in that, I was like, oh, yeah, I gotta move.
You know if you just hang that, you take a, a, a brown lunch bag? Fill it with just whatever, tie it off and just tack it up there, they'll see it, they'll, they'll believe.
It's a territorium.
Oh, yeah, 'cause I think it's a.
Oh, there's another nest, yeah. Or you could take one of my nests, uh, put it up there.
I take, I take one of my house, I'll bring it to you.
I get this, day every year, I get one in the corner of the garage door.
Yeah, that's basically all there is for us right now, our next meeting's, like you said, uh, um, the seventh, so.
That's the, this, okay.
Just like, this next meeting is number seven.
Okay.
Couple days after voting.
Do we have a date for our next, our next meeting?
I did, I did have a date, hold on, I'm just, correct.
It should be, if my calculations are right, it should be twelve.
Yeah, November twelfth, six o'clock. Cause we'll have another pub here. Very excited.
Yes.
More information to come.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Nope. Okay, then we will adjourn.
Do you have any motion for that?
No, no, I can fill the check, just.
Do you want to gamble or? Do you want to gamble real quick?
No, it's not glasses.
Ow.